I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with 2.1, Personnel Overview.
Well, good evening, President Polly. Thank you very much, first of all, for being here. I want to thank everyone that's here. A lot of people from our cabinet group is here today. Certainly appreciate that. Also, just want to give just a thank you to Keith Thomas. He is in the process of attempting to learn how to send out our live stream and such. Mr. Jackson will be going through the FBI Citizens Academy. And so he's going to fill in for Mr. Jackson from time to time. So with that being said, we'll get right into it. The first thing that is on our list is just a personnel season overview. And this is something that we reviewed back in January. I wanted to revisit it. You're going to see the same PowerPoint and some additional discussion items that I'd like to include at the end. But I didn't want to do that for the public again. I don't think we have very many. It's the budget considerations. So they're going to pop that up on the screen for everyone in the audience. All right, so when we look at our budget considerations and our personnel from year to year, this is something that we should be doing each and every year. We look at enrollment, our enrollment distribution. As you know, that changes from year to year as students move from one class to the next, one school to the next. Our course request in our high schools, the number of service personnel over formula. We do that by location and the number of professional personnel over formula by location. We look at additional staffing beyond that funding formula and the district needs and decisions that we make as a district on where we want to place our employees and our finances from year to year. So your next page is enrollment concerns. And I know this is a separate page. What I'm asking you to do is pull that off to the side, just like we did a couple of months ago. We're going to compare it to something shortly. But if you notice, that goes all the way back to 2013, 14. And 2014, 15 was our peak year in recent years for our enrollment. We had 13,221 enrolled students that year. And if you'll notice, we've been on a steady decline since, somewhere around 200 to 250 per year over that time period. And I believe if you go all the way to the 24, 25 school year, which is current from that peak, it's over 2,000 students that we have lost over that time. And our funding from year to year comes from our student enrollment. It comes in our state aid formula that way. The next page, again, just sit that one off to the side for just a moment. But our next page is our professional positions over the formula. You'll notice that in 2013, 14, which was our peak year, we had 981 professional employees. And we had 977, which were allowed by the funding formula. And of course, the excess levy, we are certainly thankful that the voters have approved that again. But that's been in place for quite some time. That takes care of any employee salary beyond the state aid allowance. And any employee beyond 200-day employee, it takes care of dental and vision, those type of things that we also give to our employees. So all of that is covered out of that excess levy. But you'll see there that we were almost at formula with professional personnel that year. The following year, we actually went up just a little bit. And our funding formula went up a little bit, 2014, 15. Sorry, I looked at the year prior. But from that time on, you'll notice that what has been allowed has decreased each year, except for one little bump in 1920. And that was some funding that we received back in the time from legislation on some of the wraparound services, such as counselors and social workers. They approved some additional funding for that that year. But you'll notice that that red line is what's allowed. That nearly matches the blue slope from the enrollment concerns that we have. But you'll also notice, if you look at the blue line on that professional position page, the employed, we continue to have a gap across there to where 24, 25, we have a very large gap between there. We have 864 allowed, we have 997 actually employed. That is because last year was the last year of the ESAR funding, which was the ARPESAR funding that was the federally stimulus package. And any employee that we kept last year went on our payroll this year. And that's the reason for that large increase right there. Any questions about that before we move on? All right, the next page is our service positions over formula. And you go back to that 2014, 15 again, you'll see that we were allowed 581. That was our peak. And we employed 604 that year. So we were just a little over 20, 23 service positions over formula. Again, you'll see all the way to 21, 22, that red line went down, matching the slope of the enrollment. But when the legislators passed the House Bill 3035, it allows for additional ECAT funding in first grade and then second grade this year and third grade next year. So you'll see that increase in 22, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. So you'll see there's a very large gap between what we're actually funded for and the employees that we have on staff right now. Any questions on that before we move on? So we actually have a few more than that. The next page talks about, there are 19 additional positions that are paid from funding source four. That's local funds only, according to this year's certified list. Out of those 19, I think two of those are service personnel. The other 17 are professional personnel. So that would be needed to add that to the staffing over formula on that as well. So as you can see, we are, if you add those tallies up, there's quite a few there. In addition, we'll need to be adding quite a few positions for the third grade portion of House Bill 3035 next year as well. So with that, as you can see, we have, we have to come up with a plan to get our funding back to where it needs to be, or get our employees and our expenses where it needs to be based on our funding formula. As you can see, if you add those up, that's quite a few individuals over our funding formula. But there are a lot of things that make Campbell County schools Campbell County schools. It's very important to our families, our students, and our employees. We offer a lot of AP classes. We have a lot of things that we offer that you can't get elsewhere. And so part of the challenge that we have is how do we continue to offer those, keep our schools updated? HVAC systems break, we have to replace them. Those are millions of dollars apiece typically. Riffs wear out, we have to replace those at a large price tag, depending on the size of the building. It could be millions as well. And so we have to make sure that we plan for those. In addition, we are expected to keep about 16.6% carryover each year. And for us, that's about $27 million. That would be two months of our expenses that we would be able to go with and make sure we can meet payroll and pay our bills if something were to happen. So cutting everyone right now down to that portion is not really feasible and keep Campbell County what it needs to be. So one of the things we've been working on is a plan to where we can offer the board a plan moving forward to where we can get to that point within three years. Try to make sure we maintain the $27 million or so. It's almost 27 million in carryover reserves as we get there. So we would need to use a little bit of our reserves to balance our budget next year, a little bit less the following year. And by year three, we would try to get within our funding formula. Part of the problem is, just to be completely transparent, if we continue down the path we're on and we lose another 250 kids next year, that's another chunk of money that we'll have to fund in our cuts next year. And so what I'm prepared to do is offer the board a plan. I can't do that publicly today, but because any time it impacts employees, we have to afford them the opportunity to have the hearing if they choose to. I appreciate Mr. Tenny being here from AFT today. Thank you, sir. I've met with him, I've met with WVEA and their reps, just to make sure they understand what we're up against, answer any questions they have, any questions employees have upfront. We haven't been delivering those letters yet, with one exception. We have, there is a code that allows for classroom teachers, regular classroom teachers in elementary school, this is going way in the weeds, but regular classroom teachers in elementary school. So if you have a second grade and you reduce the size of second grade, but you have to add a third grade, they can transfer into that position if they want to. And so Ms. Smith has already talked to those individuals. Most of them decided to transfer into that position. Some said, a couple said that we would just take our chances on the county transfer. And so all of those will be coming to you at a meeting in April for your consideration on a plan for us to move forward to address the funding shortfall that we would have. I do want to add one thing, and I've had some people ask, and it's a fair question. Should we have given the money back to the Parks and Libraries? And I will tell you emphatically, I think we should have. I think it was the right thing to do. I think it was, our community supports that. I think the majority of our staff supports that. And that was about $2 million per year. Our problem isn't a $2 million per year problem. This is more like 12 million a year, 14 million. We're living above our means. And so we're offering things that we just can't afford. That's just where we're at. We had millions of dollars that came from the federal government. We hired a lot of people. We knew at some point this day would come. For a lot of counties that came last year, some decided to carry over a lot of those positions that they could. And so that's where we found ourselves this year. So I don't have a plan to cut everyone this year. That is not, I don't relish the fact to cut anyone. But in order for Campbell County schools to be effective, to be committed to long-term growth of our students, we have to get financially sound. And we're just not there right now. And so I think another thing that I would like to say as far as our public and our community on the Parks and Libraries, I think they were clear in the primaries last May that if we don't fund them, that we're not going to receive the funding either. So it would be everything you're going to see plus another $3 to $4 million, plus another 28 that we would have had to cut out of next year's budget. So every single employee in Campbell County would have received a letter of some kind had we not passed our excess levy. Because we would have had to cut days for anyone over 200, we would have had to cut out extracurricular activities. All of those are paid through those excess levy funds. So I just wanted to just explain that upfront. It's not a $2 million issue that we're facing. It's a several million dollar issue that we've got to tighten our belt and make sure that we are doing what we need to do for Campbell County, for our communities, as we move forward. And so what I'm going to bring you in April is a plan to do that. And we will move from that meeting. We'll go into next year. And we all know that we'll have to add a few jobs next year as we do that because we, as try as we may and as best we can, it's hard to predict what August is going to look like in February, which is what we had to do. And so we will do the best we can. Kids still move over the summer, kids move into our area. And so there will be some changes that we'll have to address in the fall, which there always are. And we will meet the needs of our kids. That's what we're here for. Are there any questions? Comments?
I would reiterate that the levy may not have passed in the fall if you hadn't done, made the decision that you made and the board hadn't voted to return the funding to the Parks and Libraries. That had been taken.
Yes, I think as well. Just a couple of items I want to make sure that everyone's aware of, and I hope we have some listening online tonight. But Ms. Smith and Mr. Tackett expect to start delivering letters to impacted employees this week. Just a couple of things I want to, and it will go over the next two or three weeks. Just to be honest with you, it's a long time process. It takes a while. They sit with every employee, they try to answer questions. But I also want our employees to know, I've been there. I received a letter the first five years I worked. And I understand the fact that it's, when you receive that letter, it's hard to think of the questions you have. We all understand that because you're kind of in shock. You don't know what you're going to do, what's it look like. This is months down the road is what we're talking about. As you have questions, reach out to us. Reach out to your union reps. I encourage all of our employees to be a member of the union because our unions know we're not trying to do anything underhanded or illegal. We're just following the process that West Virginia State Legislature has put forward. And so as we go through this process and you have questions, don't feel like you have to ask them. When you get the letter, call us. We'll be glad to come back out and talk to you, talk to you on the phone. I'll be glad to stop by morning or evening before, after school on a planning period. And I know the two of them will do the same. So I just want our employees to know, if you're impacted, you have a question, just ask. We'll be glad to explain it to you. And I know that Mr. Tenny and the other union reps will as well. Also, I just want everyone to know, it's a difficult time as we go through this. And we understand that for us, we have to look at this not as employees. We look at positions. So we're not targeting any specific employee. We've hired every employee we have because we want them. And so it's not about an individual or the job they're doing. It's just, at the end of the day, we have to be able to pay our employees. And they work hard enough, they deserve that. And so as we go through the process, please don't think we're targeting anyone. That's not the purpose of it. It's just a process that's laid out by our state government. And our goal each year is to try to get everyone back that we possibly can. And over the years, we've tried to update the board with that as we made adjustments. This will just be larger than normal. I have a feeling that we'll see this from a lot of counties, though. If they didn't do it last year, make the adjustments, they're going to have to do it this year. Lastly, I think I would ask the board, if you would, I would like for us to do this personnel action in April on a separate board meeting, if we could have a special board meeting. That way, the only thing on the agenda is personnel. Because there'll be quite a bit of transfers and reduction in force. We have our contract renewals that will be on that agenda for next year. And so I would ask if the board would be okay with that. I'd like to do that on Monday, April 21st. And depending on how many employees ask for a hearing, that might be that we would have to pause that meeting and begin back on Tuesday evening. So, but if we could start then on April 21st at 4:30, that way we can put that in the letter. Our employees will know when they would need to notify us by if they request a hearing. But they also don't have to come and sit through celebrations and updates and that type thing. We could just have personnel action. Any questions on that before we move forward?
Ready to move on to 2.2, the recent special education audit overview.
Well, that's going to be me, too. So we have another PowerPoint that's going to be popping up on the screen here. All right, so I wanted to just share this with the board. It's really just an overview. We're still digging through all of the information and working on that. But it really wasn't fair to call this a special education audit. It is special education because it was really looking at why our special education costs are increasing as much as they are. For example, over the last four to five years, it's increased, we estimate, this year another $12 million. So we're looking at $26 to $27 million cost this year, where four years ago, I believe it was about 15, 15 and a half. And all of that, but about 3 and 1/2 million comes out of local funds. And so it wasn't that we don't want to spend the money where the money's needed to be spent. We just want to make sure we're spending it where it needs to go. And so this looked at not only special education, but it also looked at the referral process, the regular education process. What are we doing to make sure that's there? So before I go too far into it, I'll go with the slides. It makes a little more sense here, it's in order. But the board approved the contract for ESSI. And I know that's short, but that's Education System Solutions Incorporated on January 14th. That review included Student Assistance Team, or we call it the SAT Plan. That is a regular education plan, and that is for any students having any kind of difficulty. We have a team of teachers and employees that work together to develop a plan to try to help them be successful. And we also have the multi-tiered system of supports. We call that MTSS. West Virginia calls it WVTS. Yes. And so that would be for academics or behavior. And so there should be some interventions there for students that are having some struggles there, regardless of what that would be, math, reading, or behavior. We looked at special education caseloads, class sizes, individualized education plans, and interviews. And those interviews were not just with special education teachers and aides. It was also with regular education teachers, co-teachers, principals, administrators, to get an idea of what's going on out in the buildings, a clear picture of that. We had our exit conference. Believe it or not, we approved that on January 14th. They started working on the 15th. We've already had our exit conference that took place February 14th, with a full report was given to us that morning. Our West Virginia Department of Education audit consisted of six schools. That was done in January, I believe, or maybe December. Was it December? Thank you. West Virginia Department Audit Report is expected sometime this month. While we received an exit conference, we did not get the audit report yet. So we're waiting on that. I feel like more of the West Virginia Department, when there's going to be more compliance issues, and what we were looking at was more of the root cause of why we're heading down a path that's going to be difficult to sustain if we don't address it. And so on the next page, we'll see that, just a summary of that report, next few pages. The ESSI team visited, visits to 24 Campbell County schools. Instead of just six, they went to 24. Each of those received one day onsite special education review from a team. The data from the visit was collected through a review of student files for service verifications, classroom observations, and a SAT and MTSS review. They also visited general education classrooms for core instructional strategies, to special education classrooms for instruction and adult utilization in the classrooms, and to CO-TALK classrooms to determine if the effectiveness of the co-teaching environment. Interviews conducted with school administrators and the general special education teachers. And they looked at overall caseloads, certifications, and per-period caseloads to make sure we work compliant with 2419. So if, from that report, we had several recommendations for us as a county. And I kind of highlighted the ones that we are going to be digging into as we move forward. But provide MTSS. Remember, that's the multi-tiered system of support. Training, a district-wide professional development initiative that will ensure all schools are aligned in their understanding and execution of MTSS best practices. Provide administrative professional development on how to utilize the instructional walkthroughs so they can support the teachers and aides in all classrooms. Our next page has provide general education teachers and special education teachers with professional development regarding differentiation strategies and increasing student engagement. Provide co-teaching training for elementary teachers and administrators to help initiate co-teaching at the elementary programmatic level. Provide teacher training and effective instructional strategies and interventions. And lastly, on the recommendation, review, create, monitor speech schedules, occupational therapist schedules, physical therapist schedules, special education schedules, including talented and gifted, and aide schedules. This will help with the monitoring of staffing needs and make sure that the appropriate staff are serving each student that is on their caseload. So there were other recommendations in there. What we've been trying to do is focus on the ones that will have the impact, the positive impact on our students in our classrooms. Focus on student achievement. And so for us, the next steps were, we already started this. We have a team that's analyzing the report. We already started developing a plan based on the items within the report. We will be addressing each school's report with the school. We have not done that yet, so I'm not going to go into any particular school. We haven't done that yet. It was really a non-threatening audit. What we needed was data. We don't need to, we weren't looking for someone doing something wrong. We needed data so we could actually improve and get better. So our goal is to determine the priorities as we develop our strategic plan and target of professional development next year. And we will incorporate priorities into our strategic plan, which include professional development, curriculum, MTSS, intervention, SAT, and scheduling. And so we have another meeting with us, our group, set up for next Friday. We spend a couple hours together as we dig into it. I'm not sure if anyone has seen Heather Scarborough's note-taking capabilities, but they are on point. And so she's got us rolling along. Before we walk out of the meeting, we have copies of it. So it's already in our inbox. But I just wanted to let the board know that what we did with that company is helpful. It gave us some great insight on what we need to do and how we need to support, actually, our teachers in regular education and special education. Because we need to focus our professional development where they, our staff needs that. And so I thank you all for allowing that to happen. You will see more of that come as we go forward. We'll look at the strategic plan and maybe into next year, some of our planning and as we continue to work through that. Any questions? All right. Well, I only have one other thing. It's not on the agenda, it's just more of an informational item, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
You do have one more page there. This is strictly informational. It's about the makeup days that we've had, all of the inclement weather. Matter of fact, I think last week was the first full week we've had since mid-December. It's hard to believe. But as a result of instruction missed due to inclement weather, the district will soon request that the board modify school calendar at an upcoming board meeting. We're not doing that just yet, but we wanted to get a news release out to make sure that, and it'll explain why shortly. But we want the public to know what we're working on and what we're facing if we don't get it. So to date, we've used all five of our non-traditional instructional days. We use six code red or blue days. And one of those, actually, was an OS day that we were making up in OS, or code blue, and we ended up closing that day, too. So based on the cancellations, five days of instruction need to be rescheduled. So barring any additional missed instruction, the calendar will be adjusted as follows, and I've got them listed there. May 27th was a teacher prep day, would now be an instructional day. The 28th, 29th, and 30th of May will be instructional days, as well as June 2nd. And June 3rd would then be a day added to our instructional calendar as a teacher prep day. There is a possibility that we can get a waiver because three of those days were during state of emergencies that were declared by the governor. And so those were January 6th, February 6th, and February 17th. And that portal has not opened yet from the Department of Education. So once it does, we have the information to seek a waiver for our student makeup days. However, I just want to point this out to everyone, which is, and I understand that, but it's not something most of us think about. Even if we receive those three days, if we receive them all, then the students would be out as early as May 28th. The only waiver we can get from the state code is for students. All of our staff would still be required to work the 200 instructional days, or 200-day term, which means their last day, regardless of waivers for kids, would be June 3rd. But I hesitate bringing you anything yet to change our calendar until we see if a waiver goes through. And all of this is for naught if we receive more bad weather. Any questions on any of that? And again, we're going to be, I think Ashley has a scheduled news release this evening at 6 o'clock for that. That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up for delegations? Sign up for delegations? All right. Any board member comments at this time?
I would like to make a motion, actually, I guess I can, we're in regular session. Our work sessions used to be at 3:30, and we changed them to 4:30 to accommodate the gentleman that left. And I would like to make a motion that the work sessions be moved back to 3:30.
I would ask that- I would ask that, since we don't have another one for at least another month, maybe that speak with, we already made a discussion. I think before you vote on it, I need to put it on a board agenda item where it to be actually an item to be voted on. And so if that's something that the board wishes me to do, I can place that on the March, I was about to say February, March 18th agenda, if that's something the board would choose to do.
That would be good. I know that we always had them at 3:30, but to accommodate, I can't remember his name.
Mr. Byers.
What was it?
Mr. Byers.
Mr. Byers, yeah. To accommodate him, we went to 4:30. And I really liked the 3:30 better. I don't know about the rest of you, but if you could put it on the agenda, and we'll vote on it for the next meeting.
Is there one other person who would like to see that on there?
I don't mind if it's on there and we have a discussion and vote on it.
Okay. All right. I'll put it on the 18th agenda.
It was just, it was especially nice in the winter to have the work sessions earlier, you know.
Well, I'm thinking, too, about the staff out here.
Yeah.
They have to wait around.
They do.
An extra hour, right?
Thank you, Rod.
And like, I'm sure these folks would like to take care of business and get on home. And I think we should take that in consideration as well.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad that.
Yeah, I agree.
Nobody cares. I mean, we did it for years, and we only moved it because of, I always forget his name, you know, the member that left. So that's all, that's all I have to say.
Well, I think it was moved also because at one time, there were a lot of members from the community who were coming and they were attending the meetings.
Yeah.
And if they had to work, it made it easier for them to get here.
But we never, in the years that I've spent with the board, we never had at our work sessions, members come out, that many, hardly any. It was always what you see out there now, staff. And that's why, if nobody objects, we'll vote on it at the next meeting. If, Linda, if you don't like it, just vote against it.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I have two more comments.
Go ahead.
First off, I had a parent contact me. She happens to be a friend also. But her twin sons were part of the group whose field trip was canceled during COVID. And she contacted me because she feels that parents are not being well-informed on the litigation that is ongoing. She, as one of those parents, feels like she's having to. She's contacted many different entities to get information, try to see how this is going to be resolved. And so she's requesting that we contact the parents and inform them better. That was what she requested.
Do you have a list of those parents, Ms. Warren McElmeyers?
That is the problem, I do not. There is a section under the general counsel page, my general counsel page, that has the updates on there, and that needs to be updated because in January, the judge, Judge Howard, who's our circuit court judge here in Campbell County, granted another continuance. So the trial will not be held again until June, as the date is of now, so.
What I'll do is I'll try to work with Mr. Mann, who's our middle school executive director, and get a list of parents that we might be able to get a letter out to them and let them know where we're at. And if they have questions, reach out to Ms. Myers.
That'd be good.
Sure.
For people who don't know, those parents lost their money for the trip, that they had paid for the trip, including Mr. Hardison. Okay, the second thing I'd like to, I'd like to say is that I attended the LSIC event at Campbell Midland, on the, at the castle. What was the name of that? It was cute.
Night at the Castle.
Night at the Castle. And when I was with three different schools, LSIC groups, Keith Thomas asked me to introduce myself, which I did. And I brought up that I was working on this, changing the time school starts for secondary schools, that I had been working on that. And this comment came up with two of the educators in that room who were also parents of high school students. Their complaint is the S.H.I.E.L.D. class. Now, honestly, know nothing about S.H.I.E.L.D., zero. But they were complaining because both of them have children who are exceptional students, and they have to go to school earlier, like all the other high school kids, because, well, the first period of school or the first class is S.H.I.E.L.D., apparently. And a lot of kids do their homework there, I guess. I don't know, I don't know if they have instruction during that time or if it's all just like a study hall. But they complain, and one parent said, her kid says, "Mom, can I just go late today and skip S.H.I.E.L.D.?" So they are complaining about having to go to S.H.I.E.L.D.
So Mrs. Scarborough would be able to explain S.H.I.E.L.D. to us, so.
Okay. So S.H.I.E.L.D. is like a home, a homeroom. We are required at the high school level to have what is called advisor, advisee. And so Campbell Midland this year still has S.H.I.E.L.D. Huntington High does not have S.H.I.E.L.D. Them not having a homeroom does not negate the time that they have to report to school because Huntington High did away with their homeroom. They called it compass. And they actually added those minutes to the instructional time during the school day. So it doesn't change the length of the school day. They are working on things like Khan Academy. They are getting homework support. They also have time to recover if someone has to recover something. So there is time built in for support at Campbell Midland during that S.H.I.E.L.D. time. It's not just that they don't have to go. There is, there are things that they're doing. They also provide SAT prep during that time period. We do have two teachers at Campbell Midland who are doing some extra support for SAT practice. Specifically, they have targeted groups that they're working with to do SAT practice. So if, if for any reason, and I'm not saying it is, but if for any reason S.H.I.E.L.D. would go away, the time that students report has not changed at Huntington High, who did away with their compass. They just add it to the instructional day. Huntington High did that because of the number of tardies that they had during the school time. But we also are responsible for making sure that we're still doing that advisor, advisee, guiding students to how they're planning post-secondary.
How long is the S.H.I.E.L.D. program?
It's about 20 minutes.
Okay.
So you're saying that Huntington High did away with it because they were having so many tardies? Were people coming, were children coming late?
Yes.
So they could just skip and just go on to first period?
Yes. And so now we start first period five minutes, around five minutes early.
So if advisor, advisee is mandatory, and they're doing S.H.I.E.L.D. because you have to get in advisor, advisee, how is Huntington High making?
They're doing it within, just within their school day. They also have clubs that they're doing, like on certain Wednesdays, they're doing clubs. So they're, they're just building it in within their council, making sure their counselors are addressing it, making sure teachers are addressing it, too. So their time when they pass out information, give information to students, may be first period instead of the homeroom period. So it's just shifting it just a little bit.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments at this time?
No.
If not, I'll just have a motion for adjournment. We have the motion, we have the second. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye. Aye. Adjourned.